Call the meeting to orders after the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, so first up, just hand this out to the board. Just hand this down to them, this is for the, for NEMA. Pass this down to...
I'm seeing that right.
Okay, let me check if you guys have the copies or not. So first up, we have the, the NEMA unsafe building proceeding. And I know that you all have a copy of this report from Colliers, who is the consulting engineer for NEMA, on this fire protection concern here. I'm sure that you've all had a chance to, to take a look at what they've said in their report. And so I guess what I would, you know, what I would basically say is that, you know, first we should probably hear from them, but, you know, we've all had a chance to review this, Gary, you've had a chance to review this as well.
I reviewed that and I prepared, I prepared comments. And then they made a resubmission.
Yes.
And then our engineer made some comments back.
Yes.
But I think we need more detail from Mr. Lammerow in regards to his comments.
Yeah, so I mean, basically.
You just basically referenced that it doesn't comply with code. However, I didn't see what the specifics, what the issues are. And I couldn't answer for the applicant tonight, how to go about correcting those items.
So basically, in, you know, talking to the engineer about, to Mike Lammerow about this, and a few other conversations, basically, you know, in order for, you know, what Mike Lammerow is sort of recommending here is that, you know, we're gonna need the NEMA's consulting engineer to sort of provide a little more detail and to sort of go into a little bit more as to how they might be able to, you know, meet this minimum fire protection, you know, issue. I mean, if you look at page two, you know, you have this, you know, the full recommended fire flow. And I know from talking to, you know, to the town engineer that there might be a way to sort of meet this if there's a reduction in occupancy of some of the buildings, you know, meaning like we're using less, you know, space in the buildings, if there's additional water capacity brought on, et cetera, so.
There were also comments received from the village, Mike Traynor, in regard to the backflow.
Well, on the back, yeah, on the backflow, so that, that, that's a, yes, so obviously that was an issue too.
So there's a various number of items that we feel still need to be addressed.
So I think, I think that's where, we're not obviously gonna be able to get through those tonight. I mean, what I'm, you know, recommending, and I'll, I'll get to the app, you know, to NEMA in a second, is that, you know, over the next week, we're gonna need to have like a technical meeting here with, you know, the engineer and yourself, NEMA, their team, to go through this, to see how we can, you know, proceed and then, and then come back to the board in pretty quick order. I mean, you know, they're prepared to put the dry hydrant in and to get the pool up and functioning is my understanding. But, you know, we have to, we have to, you know, see if there's a way to, to deal with, you know, some of these, you know, additional issues. And so I know from talking to Mike Lammerow that he would recommend having like an offline meeting where we could get together and talk about the technical issues.
I think that would be a good idea.
But before we, I, I just wanted, you know, give NEMA a chance to sort of discuss their, do you have anything you want to add to this discussion?
No, I, Anthony Featherston, Colliers Engineering Design. What Gary said is perfectly accurate. He gave us some comments. We responded to those comments. I received an email today from Mike Lammerow, and he's absolutely correct. We're not needing code. But what our goal was, was to provide supplemental water. It was to provide temporary additional water where it does not exist presently. So we came up with the plan for, which is what we spoke about, doing, using the pool as a cistern, as a tank, and having a dry hydrant that could be drafted. I think Mike's, Mike's one comment was about access. So we could certainly work that out with Mike. If, if we want to get the truck farther away from the building, I completely understand that.
I don't, I.
That's what he, yeah. No, if that's what he was referring to, that we could work with that. I, I think the technical meeting you're suggesting is, is the right way to go. So we can hit his, his concerns. We could talk about the occupancy, moving that around, and getting a real number for the, the demand, what the demand should, would be.
Could I interject? Because I actually reached out to Mike about this, because I was curious what he meant by that. And I did get him to reply. NEMA's engineer is showing code compliance that will require approximately 2,050 gallons per minute during a duration of four hours. But then they show a proposed dry hydrant in the pool can only produce 575 gallons per minute for three hours. Additionally, the room to the dry hydrant does not meet code. That's what he meant. I wanted clarification of what he meant by that.
Can I stop you there? Because you're hitting a lot of points.
Yeah.
The, the dry hydrant location, we showed that it was feasible to draft that much water out of the hydrant.
Sure.
That pipe is completely flexible. That could go in a farther distance away from the building to meet that address, to address that. But I just want to make it clear for the board that the 570 gallons a minute that you're referring to for three hours, that's what the supplemental can do from the pool. There's also hydrants throughout the site, which have been tested. And they can do between 500 and 600 gallons a minute. So we would have about five, a thousand gallons a minute now with this supplemental coming from the pool. Because if there was a fire.
Sure.
The fire department would use the hydrants and they would also use the drafting from the pool. Get as much water as possible.
Right, right, because I, when he first said it doesn't meet code, I wanted a clarification. What does he mean by that?
And let me stop you there, also because we weren't trying to meet the code.
I do, I want to.
We, we were trying to supplement their, the school's been there a long time.
Yes, it has.
This is, this issue has existed for a long time. We're trying to find a location where we could quickly, this summer, get something connected up right away and get that supplemental water. That's what our goal was. Mike's right. If we want, if we can move this around and do the access, yes. We could also look at the occupancy, you know, that's something else we could look at. But also, is there another opportunity to provide more water? Yeah, look, this was the easy one. This was the low hanging fruit.
I mean, you've only come in recently. The concern was really, this whole thing started with unsafe building. And I am very concerned about the safety of the students that are coming to school. I know this is, you know, the next thing, but that's how we started. And then now we're on the water and now we're talking about like supplemental water. And I, it's been over a year and I'm, you know, school's coming again. And, you know, does NEMA plan to have students again? Is it gonna be safe for the students that are coming in?
That, the game plan.
And I know we all spoke about this, and, and I just feel like we're going in circles.
No ma'am, no, absolutely not. No, we told, we spoke with the town at this meeting when I was here about two months ago. And we said we would be in, we would deliver everything long before so that your consultants could look at it. We got productive comments.
Yes.
Now we're fine tuning.
Okay.
We'll go to a meeting and have a technical meeting and I think we could address some more of the comments. That's the goal. The goal is to get this done.
Oh, and that's our goal.
That's what the goal is.
Is really the safety of, not only the students, but think about our emergency responders that are, if they have.
Ma'am, I am completely cognizant of that.
We're, 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 we're in agreement, but I just wanted to read it when I don't see something's in code. And, and please forgive me, I'm not part of these conversations. I'm just, I'm catching up in terms of what has been going on. So, again, it's definitely a respectful conversation.
And this will be all in the public. This will all be public.
Yeah, I just don't want, like, I would like this a little bit sooner. Yes, we did get your report and I do appreciate it. But I guess there's, there's another discussion and I want to just make sure I have all the pieces. So thank you.
I think what I'm also very interested in, understanding that it's older structures that we're talking about in an older planned school, that we're not requiring NEMA to go beyond their building requirements. Because the water mains are what they are, to the extent that certain things could undergo repairs or improvements. I think it's important to not place on NEMA the requirement that they do more than is required in other schools or other surrounding buildings that are likewise. Because they, you know, I've spoken with Mike Traynor about the, the water main that exists in the closest hydrant on Academy. And that's the same one as our middle school relies on. And it's also not as great as it could be.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm really looking forward to what's coming out of your technical meeting so that we don't put more onus on NEMA than is required to. Especially given the, the age of construction of the buildings that we're talking about. It'd be different if they were reconstructing.
Right.
But they're not. It's an old building.
Yeah.
So I, I do look forward to what comes out of your technical meeting.
One of the things that NEMA is looking at is buildings, occupancy, and more towards those lines of age of building, type of construction, all of that. And they're having discussions on that so far. We're getting there. We're getting there.
Is there any discussion about moving students around?
Yes.
Okay, that, that, I want to hear that.
That was occupancy. That was the occupancy part of the conversation. And I cannot speak to that. That's not my expertise. But there's someone else. I could put a dry hydrant in a pool. I could design that. But the occupancy piece, that, that's more an architectural, yeah.
Okay.
We've asked them to look at the, I mean, obviously, look, you've got the technical piece. And then we've asked them to do the occupancy calculation and that just wasn't done in time, you know, for this. So we, you know, that'll come out at the technical meeting and hopefully we can get, you know, to where we need to be with this. So we'll, as soon as we get that meeting scheduled and.
And who's in charge of scheduling that?
I mean, it's gonna be right after this. We're gonna get it on the calendar, either this week or early next week. We'll have it and then we'll get the results over to, you know, to the board. As to, I mean, obviously, you know, we had one of these, what, two or three months ago?
Yes.
Right? It was, you know, engineers, you know, water department, you know, building inspector, Tim was there, et cetera. So we'll, you know, do the same thing again.
Right, I, I just hope we could, like, the board, the entire board, and I think this is what you're saying, Councilwoman Michael Rosi, is that the entire board knows, you know, what comes out of the meetings. That's all I'm saying. When you only have one or two members of the board knowing, it puts the rest of us at a disadvantage.
Yeah, I mean, after the last technical meeting, it was fully shared with the entire board. So, you know, in fact, I believe there was a lengthy email that was sent around to the entire board after that meeting. So we'll, you know, we should, we do the same thing we did last time. And then we'll, you know, try to get this resolved. Because you have students back on campus towards the end of August, you know?
When do the students come back?
Respectable meeting of August.
Middle of August.
Right, it's like, that's probably already, it's somewhere in there, yeah.
Four weeks.
Yeah.
My recommendation, do continue the public, continue the hearing, rather, on the unsafe building and to the August meeting.
Yeah, the August meeting, yeah.
And that way the board could, you know, hear back from the, at the outcome of the technical meeting that would occur in the meeting.
Chairman, one thing I want to say, like, technical meeting. Okay, so, okay, I have a question now. So now, one of the things I want to talk about, the technical meeting stuff, because I, I know you talked about, you know, this dry hydrant supplement to the hydrants on our facility on, you know, on, you know, on both, supposedly.
Right.
None of those hydrants, and when I looked at the hydrant tests, two of them we had done, maybe even three, none of them meet the requirement to actually function to fire out blasts. So that they're basically, all of them are inadequate to do any firefighting work. So I'm not sure what you're talking about, how this dry hydrant could be a supplement to those hydrants when those hydrants are basically, you know, it's not, not, they're not involved because the, so when we bring, at the technical meeting, we come to that, you should bring those, those test sheets from, you know, the hydrant.
I have them here. I have them here.
Yeah, because I mean, it's a 500, it's a 600 gallons. There's that one hydrant, then it puts out 500 gallons or 600 gallons, not one.
Oh, yes, there were, yeah, yeah, well, I disagree with you. It very simply explained the.
You know, it has to run for a certain amount of time. Just because it comes out 500 gallons for 30 seconds doesn't mean it, it has to be sustainable for, for X amount of time. And it doesn't do that.
Okay, it was a hydrant flow test, okay, alright.
And it did that fast.
I, I, I'm not here to argue with you, sir.
I'm not, I'm not arguing, but I'm saying when we have this technical meeting, please bring that information with us.
I certainly will.
Because using this word supplement for fire protection for these items, that probably won't even be utilized because they're not, they're non-functional.
Okay, so the technical meeting will be, okay, so we're all looking forward to it.
Okay, so, yeah, look, we'll be in touch on the.
Good.
Technical meeting.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay, so if I could get a motion to extend the NEMA proceeding until August, until the August 12th, town board meeting.
Okay. Second.
Eastern Court, Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edom Reyes.
Yes.
Ms. McCorr.
Yes.
Ms. Wojciechowski.
Yes. Okay, so next up, we have the public hearing on the land use moratorium. Does anybody here to make public comments on the land use moratorium, public hearing? Well, I just also to make sure that we introduce these to the, if you guys have seen this, here's copies of the, this is from Orange County Planning. We have letters from them. Need that for the record. Let's pass that down. We also have copies of the letter from the town planning board as well, because they had to weigh in on these two. So we have that. All right, going once, going twice. Any public comment on this? Town board members, any questions, comments? No?
No, thank you.
Okay. So then I will make a motion to close the public hearing on the local law land use moratorium.
Second. Ms. McCorry.
Yes.
Ms. Edom Reyes.
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosi.
Yes.
Ms. Wojciechowski.
Yes. Okay, next up, I have a public hearing on the amended local law commercial audiovisual production. Any public comment on that? No? Okay. Board members? No? Okay. We get a motion to close the public hearing on the commercial audiovisual production, public hearing.
Second. Ms. McCorry.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edom Reyes.
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosi.
Yes.
Ms. Wojciechowski.
Yes. Okay, next up, I have approval in minutes for the June 5th, 2025 special meeting, the June 10th, 2025 work session and special meeting, and the June 17th, 2025 regular meeting. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
Second. Ms. McCray.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
I have to stand. I was not present.
Okay. Ms. Edom Reyes.
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosi.
Yes.
Ms. Wojciechowski.
Yes. Okay, is there any public comments on the work session, agenda, members? No? Okay. So first up, we have the skate park proposal from Elise Wright.
Hi.
Hi.
Currently Cornwall has no designated skate park. And I think we should have had one a long time ago. But it would definitely benefit, like, you know, the kids in our community. I'm friends with kids who still skateboard and, you know, they've always wanted a safe place to do that. And I also did a civics project about this for my, you know, senior year project. And I've had a lot of people come to me and say that they would really like that because, you know, there, there's kids always on their land in the streets and they're always like, you know, in the way. And I think it would be a good, safe, like, you know, place for everybody. Some of my points are that it will engage, you know, physical activity. It will benefit the community. It will bring kids together and they can relate on stuff. It will also, you know, keep kids out of trouble because, you know, I, I've been friends with a bunch of kids and I know what they're like and I know that they're on the streets and they're, you know, doing bad things. And I think it would really help them, like, you know, come together and be in a safe place and that it could be, you know, regulated, monitored. And it will also be very low maintenance and high reward because concrete, you know, doesn't break. And it will, you know, bring, you know, bring, you know, people together, help families. And I think it would just, you know, be a good thing. Because I also broke my leg, like, back in 2020. And that was because we didn't have a skate park. I was skating on a road and I fell. And I, I just really want a skate park. I really, I want. But, I mean, do you guys have any, you know, questions or comments?
Do you know of any other communities close to us that have skate parks?
Yeah, Washingtonville and Newburgh have one. And I'm friends with, you know, this guy. And he, he's like, he kind of like runs the Newburgh Skate Park. He's like, you know, one of the head guys there. And he said that, you know, it really helps, you know, kids kind of find an outlet as well, you know, to get outside, you know, make new friends, you know, be safe and not be in the middle of the street. And it's actually, like, you know, worked out for them, you know. There, I haven't, I looked into it, especially like during my civics project. There hasn't been, you know, really any problems or, you know, injuries of any sort of, like, you know, besides falling, surfing, or knee. But.
Have you, have you been to any of them?
Yeah, I've been to the Newburgh one. I haven't been to the Washingtonville one, but.
Do they require helmets and pads or no?
I, I think there's a sign at the Newburgh one. I don't know about the Washingtonville one. But there's definitely, there's signs in the front that say, you know, you should, recommending that you should wear that and that, I think there's a sign that says that they're not held responsible for something, like, you know, skating or wrestling, that kind of thing.
I'm gonna check. I don't think Washingtonville has it anymore.
Really?
Yeah, I think they actually converted it to pickable courts, if I'm correct.
That's a little exposed.
Am I correct?
Yeah, they had one branch set.
Yeah, I thought, I mean, if I teach there and other kids were doing it and then they blew.
It was kind of wood and, wood, or, or materials.
Well, you know, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot of money. And I know before that they even had it as a roller hockey rink. And then they tried to convert to the skate, skate park and now it's, it's pickable.
Yeah.
I know.
But.
What is the population of skaters in Cornwall?
I, you know.
Twenty kids, 10 people.
There's a lot, there's a lot more. Because this also includes like BMX bikes, you know, roller skates, anybody who's like on wheels. So, I mean, kids on BMX bikes, I see them every day. There's a bunch of them. They're all like the little run reps. They're all around. And some of my very close friends, they're like going to their junior year and they're skaters and they've always wanted a skate park. I mean, they begged me to do this. They're like, you have to get a skate park at least. But, I mean, I think it's, I think, you know, even though I'm graduating and I'm leaving, I think I wanted to do that for the kids of this town. Because, you know, we don't have anything really for, I mean, besides the basketball courts and, you know, I think there's like some youth group that goes around, but that's it. There's not really anything else for kids to do. And I think it would, you know, help them make friends and, and.
Thank you.
Thank you. But also, if like funding is an issue, there's also the Tony Hawk Foundation. You can reach out to them and they will help you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, actually, I know, I knew about the Tony Hawk because when we had the, you may recall, there was a survey that went around a number of years ago, like Cornwall needs a skate park. And I think we had over a thousand people assigned that. And when we were going through the process, we had come upon the Tony Hawk Foundation. And it's even in the New York Forward grant as a project. Although we haven't finalized all those projects yet, but it is, it is in the strategic investment plan to have a skate park. So there is some hope. But I know talking to Tim, you know, we kind of feel like maybe we got to figure out when the right time is and sort of look into this a little bit further. But I mean, I don't think this is like a no. I think this is just like, we've got to, you know, we've got to do some planning, see what the funding options are, where we locate it and, you know, look at some other things.
Yeah, definitely do our homework, ask the board, you know, do our homework. And talk to, I want to talk to other municipalities that have successful skate parks and how to go about it, what are their ground rules and policies and stuff like that. So there's more to it, just fine. You know, being a retired firefight medic, and I've been to numerous incidents at skate parks. But, 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 a lot of trauma, a lot of skate parks.
You're absolutely right, but I think time has also changed. The way I used to wear helmets, for instance, is different from now. I mean, all the equipments have changed. And also, it is a great idea to add another youth activity in the community. We do have tennis courts, we have pickleball courts, we have basketball and skate park. Maybe a smaller size. It doesn't have really enormous, you know, giant face. But I like the idea to add to the youth activities.
Yeah, a lot of it comes down to cost, I mean, I'm sorry, it's the grownups, it's the cost. The liability insurance, I'm sure, you know.
Yeah.
Liability firms are gonna love that because, you know, people get injured. So, yeah, there's a lot of things to think about. And thank you so much for coming and doing this, too.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next, we have the environmental reviews for the USDA buyout program. So this is, you may recall that there's these, you know, multiple things that we have to provide to the USDA for review. We have the titles and USDA has copies of the titles. We have, we had the third party appraiser review the six appraisals and submit a form basically saying that he agreed with the analysis of the appraisals that were done. And then we had our engineering firm do the, a short form, phase one environmentals. And you just, I just want to make a note on here real quick because it was a, if you look through here, and this is just the fault of, they checked box 20 on here.
Right.
Which says, you know, has the site proposed action or adjoining property been subject of remediation? And so they had to check the box because 2,000 feet away from the houses on Hasbrook, you have Cornwall Plaza, which underneath the park, so like that just comes up when you do the environment, when you do the mapper. So that gets pulled, but none of these, you know, properties have those underlying. It's 2,000 feet away, you know, in the parking lot below, you know, Digi Market.
So nothing with the, I know the hotel property also had some remediation, correct? Was that part of it or?
That didn't, it didn't get pulled.
I'm surprised, because I think that's closer.
Because it's closer to.
So, yeah, I mean, we, we, I just had this discussion with our engineering firm this afternoon, but that's the only thing that got pulled and. So we have, you know, all of these. And so what we have to do is, we've got to, when we get to the, to the special meeting, Steve said we basically have to essentially do a separate resolution and adopt them all individually. You can't just do like a blanket. So once we do that, it goes off to USDA. They continue, they look at it and then they give us the go ahead as to whether or not we're okay to start negotiating with the, you know, property owners for, for buyouts. But that's like the next step. And I'm sure you all have, I think I gave you a copy of that, that really long flow chart, like five page flow chart that they had, that said what step we're on. So, but that's the next step. These, to number three, domestic partnership. Yeah, well, yeah, no, I'm just gonna, so basically, yeah, there isn't anything. So basically, in the PVA contract, there is a provision. there is a provision that said we have to offer domestic partnership benefits. Um, and so what we have to do is we're gonna have to make a change in the handbook and we're gonna um, uh, our employment law firm is looking further into this, but we're gonna have to just make like a tweak and we're gonna have to attach some conditions to, you and I spoke about this a little bit, like it's gonna have to be whatever is required to prove that you have a domestic partnership. I mean, I recall from like when I worked for the city of New York, there was like very specific things you had to like prove and provide. So we just have to make sure that we're doing it the right way and we're not gonna get like in trouble for mishandling it and.
The Orange County clerk governs this in this county.
So that's what we have to.
Is there like a legal definition for domestic partnership?
There is, there's a legal definition and then there's also a legal, I don't, I wanna try and read the same ceremony. There is a legal action that the parties have to take before the county clerk. Um, like move to one another as domestic partners and they come away with a certificate that is almost like a marriage license, that is a domestic partnership license.
That sounds common law.
Well, it kind of, but no. It's actually statutory, it's actually like a, I think it's county law, isn't it, they governs this.
It's not as simple as a domestic partner is saying, you're my domestic partner.
Yeah, it's a whole process to establish. Yeah.
I don't have a public commitment, I don't, I guess.
So we'll get all those details together and we'll get exactly what we have to do to comply.
And is it, is it your intent to extend this to the the rest of our employees?
Oh, of course, yes.
Everyone is treated the same.
Of course, yeah.
So this is like, um, as far as insurance, are you talking health insurance or are we talking um, life insurance or?
It's everything.
Everything. Okay, now I'm just trying to clarify.
Yeah, it's everything that we have.
I think everything is in the contract, right?
Yeah, yep, everything, yep.
Thank you.
Um, then we have the New York Forward extend the RFPs deadline for this small project fund, so we, um, you may recall we put these out. An administrator for the New York Forward grant program and a professional for environmental services, we put them out. Begin in June, we only got one response, we're gonna put them out again, uh, we have to have, it actually says in the state contract that we have to have a minimum of two responses before we can select. So even though we had one, we can't go with it, we have to get a second one. And so we'll endeavor to get the second one and then ho- and hopefully go forward with this in August so we can get this. This is really the only thing holding us up from putting out the small project fund because we need to have this administrator.
Sure.
So we'll do that, um.
So how does, how does it, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
How does it, I was talking to um, a contractor this morning with the county. How, like we just publish it in the local, is that what we do or how uh, how else?
It has to go, it has to go in our paper of record, so it went on our paper of record and then it's gone on to some different websites and then I have a list, the state gave us a list of of um, basically there are engineering firms and different planning firms that have experience managing the like the, the state has different, there's like the ministry fund, there's this, there's the DRI fund and so they want you really to go with somebody off a list that has experience complying with state regulations. So we basically sent it out.
Did you read each one?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Oh, no, I'm just.
We did, yeah, yeah, and so I think, I think part of what the, part of what the issue is, is that you have the DRI and the New York Forward and they're like differing amounts. And so I think because we're around one New York Forward, we're having to explain a little bit more to the firms because it's smaller dollar amounts, but still like the same amount of work. So we're having to basically have some discussions, so I just, you know, envision having to have some more discussions to get a second bit out of this, but I think we can, you know, we'll get there.
Okay.
The, the next is the pickleball court fence offer of dedication. So you may recall last meeting, um, the property owner up here on the hill, Mr. Bader, he is, you know, is willing to um, enter into what's a license agreement to essentially put up this noise silencing, um, you know, stuff, raise the fence around pickleball courts because it makes a, it makes a loud noise and he's offered to do that, to enter into an agreement with the town, pay for everything, to maintain it, replace it over a period of five years. So you know, and we agreed that we would move forward with that, but it's not just, um, there's more to accepting it. Like an irrevocable offer of dedication, he's gotta actually give us construction plans and more details and insurance and a whole bunch of other things, so he's got these requirements and he's gonna be working on it, so we're just really just waiting on him to.
He was actually here?
Yeah, he was here with.
Uh, yes, he was, he was also here this evening.
Oh.
And uh, he uh, wanted me to pass along a message that he agrees to all the terms in the agreement.
Sure.
So if the board is in a position to adopt it as part of your regular meeting, uh, your special meeting tonight, uh, he would move forward on his end as well.
Yes, I, I missed it, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, no, he, he was asking that not to stay.
Gotcha. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think as long as we just do this obviously conditional upon him meeting the requirements and providing the stuff, we don't need to waste another month, you know, we can just sort of have them live.
No. And who, who would ensure that he provides?
Yeah, I, I would be more comfortable that we, we settle up, we say, we vote on it because I mean, it's just a verbal.
Well, I would think that we wouldn't, we wouldn't accept the gift until he.
Right, so we're not acting on it, that's what I was trying to clarify.
We would accept the gift conditional on him meeting the requirements of this irrevocable offer of dedication. Meaning he would have to, we would not allow him to go forward.
Yes, so, so the way, the way the offer of dedication would work is that there's, there's no acceptance that would be occurring tonight. What you, what you would be authorizing would be uh, the, the fact that he could submit this offer of dedication as it's been proposed. So uh, it's really uh, everything that Mr. Gaba had outlined uh, in draft offer. Um, and as I said, Mr. Bader did say that he agrees to all the requirements that were laid out, he was provided with a copy. Um, so I think at this point, uh, it's up to him to work on, on the details that you want to see. You're under no obligation to accept them.
Right, so I would give you the grade.
It's, it's the same, what's the?
Then why would we wait till he works out the details, I'm not, I'm just, I'm not clear.
So what would we be voting on, where are we voting on anything tonight or no, for authorization?
There, actually, you would not be voting tonight because the resolution that Steve prepared is a resolution accepting the offer of dedication.
Okay.
He needs to finalize and sign the offer of dedication and then he could be on uh, for your August, for your August twelfth meeting. Uh, and in the meantime, he can also work on assembling all of the various different aspects of that.
Right, I would think upon the details before you vote.
So we'll put it on for August twelfth, but that's good that he said that he's, he's agreeing to.
Correct, and he, and he can use the next couple of weeks to put everything together.
Yeah, basically another month, okay. Okay, um, next we have Hasbrook drainage order, or drainage project change order number four. So basically this is um, you know, bringing the, this work is outside of the, outside of the contract. Um, it's increasing it by fifty-nine thousand, one hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. And you can see here that basically we've got this excavation removal and disposal of, of stumps. Um, uh, and then it's also the uh, paying for backfill and run of trench material. Um, this has been reviewed by, you know, by MHE Engineering and by Larry Marshall, the project engineer.
Right, so John, please for clarification, this, this one is just the increase of thirteen thousand, five hundred thirty-nine.
Oh, yes, sorry, yeah.
I was gonna say, yeah, this.
Yeah, sorry, so.
The fifty-nine number represents.
Yeah, that, that's the total going back, yeah, sorry.
Right, so this one is just fifteen, thirteen, five, three, nine, twelve.
Let me get that number there, yeah, sorry about that. So um, yeah, so that, that's what the amount is, um, you know, for the stump removal. To date, we're about, um, for the three previous change orders that the board's approved. Um, I would expect, um, I know that I had, um, you know, I'd asked you guys, we may need to come back on the seventeenth to authorize, in order for us to move forward with the Hasbrook leg of the project, we have to, um, you may recall we had to do a little bit of like a redesign there. Um, and so we're gonna have to, um, to, to approve some of those costs as well as some of the additional pipe that has to be ordered now so they can start the first week of August. If it's not gonna fit within our contingency, we're gonna have to come back and do a change order, but we're still working that out. I'll, I'll, I'll know by Friday if we have to come back next week and do that, that uh, that meeting, but this is the change order for.
Fifteenth or the seventeenth?
Seventeenth, yeah, in the morning, yeah, Thursday morning, yeah. So this is what this is for. You can see the breakdown here. So, that, uh, seven, um, this is Millennium Strategies Agreement, this is for New York bricks. So I know I've had this discussion with some of you and I've mentioned it in the past. Um, there's a new hundred million dollar pot of money, this is round one. This is for uh, community centers, senior centers to rehab, construct new, add additions onto existing buildings. It's due August fifteenth. Um, and so this would uh, allow Millennium to submit the grant application. MHE Engineering, as you know, is already working on the redesign, or I shouldn't say redesign, but they had, um, roughly adding about seventy-five hundred square feet to Munger Cottage. So we're gonna take that, you know, design, apply, um, it's probably gonna be about a three to four million dollar grant. Um, and our uh, we're um, because we're doing additions, we're capped at asking for five million dollars and we believe that the adding out about seventy-five hundred square feet is gonna be like a, let's say a three point five to four million dollar, you know, project, that's the square footage, that's what our engineer is calculating it at. So we're gonna be, somebody's gonna ask, you know, for New York bricks of, you know, it's somewhere in that amount, it'll go in. Um, you know, even if we don't get all of it, some of it would go a long way towards, you know, making that project a reality, but you know, this is the first crack at this, at this grant.
I'm sorry, um, as far as the four thousand plant fee?
Yep.
What do we have left in the, um, I'm sorry, I didn't.
This is gonna come out of the um, professional services line.
The professional services line?
Yeah, so where we have like engineering and other consulting.
Okay, so it's not gonna come out of our grant?
Well, we've, we've.
You're done.
We've already gone through that, so I think when we get to the budget, um, and I, I've spoken to Pam, there's plenty of money in that line.
All right, so professional services.
It's like a lot of professional services.
Thank you.
So when we're doing the budget in the fall, I would recommend that we do a monthly retainer with Millennium so we get unlimited grants. I mean, I think that this year has kind of proven that at the rate of which, I mean, if you look at what we're applying for, it's playgrounds, it's parks, it's uh, it's drainage, it's pools, it's, you know, and so I think we're gonna wanna have that ability to submit as many as, as possible, but we definitely have the money in that line. I've, you know, verified that with Pam.
Okay.
So next we have the, let's get to the bricks. Next we have the miserable pool survey results. So let me just say that um, this is not the only survey we're doing. This, this survey was, we needed to gather some information, I mean, this was mostly put out because in order to get to, you know, the different design options, um, the engineer, John Petracini, asked for us to get some feedback on different types of like add-ons to pools. So that's partially why we did this, we also wanted to get general feedback on what the public, you know, thinks about.
Having it.
Well, yeah, I mean, whether or not they wanna get rid of it, whether or not they wanna repair it, whether or not they wanna replace it. Um, you know, nine hundred twenty-seven people took this, um, you know, yeah, uh, seventy-eight point two percent wanted to tear down and build a new pool. Now mind you, this doesn't have costs or options, and we know that that's, like, the next survey's gonna have costs and options, but you know, seventy-eight point two percent wanted that, fourteen percent were, I was uh, unsure, need more information and we will get them that information, but we didn't wanna, in this survey, we didn't wanna go out and just like put a guess of it on, you know, what it was gonna be, permanently close the pool a very small amount, continue to repair the aging pool, two point nine percent. I know, you know, we've had this discussion that like we shouldn't have said, you know, aging pool in there.
Yeah, statistically, it's a slanted um, question, we could have just simply said, um, basically, tear down and build a new one, uh, unsure, need more information, close the pool, or re- repurpose the pool, existing pool.
Yeah, I mean, look, Jason didn't feel like.
We don't, the, the statistics, you don't put those kind of, that kind of language because it does lead the person in the survey that, okay, this is a crappy option.
I mean, look, I thi- I think, I think everyone knows that we have a crappy pool, it's not like we're leading anybody, but, but.
It's a pool.
But um, I mean, look, I think, I think, yeah, look, you know, with the numbers that may be changed a little bit, maybe we would have seventy percent or sixty-five percent instead of.
No, I told him, I'll talk to him about it, I just thought, you know.
As you said, this is our first survey.
It's the first time around, I just.
The next one will be more detailed. This was general survey.
So, um, but this, you know, this kinda gets to like the next piece here, which is the um, the pool replacement engineering agreement with John Petracini. So this is where, this is the next step of this, this is like the key next step here. Okay, we have the survey results, he's got them after we agree to this. So for roughly, um, for five thousand dollars or less, we're now going to get, you know, and Virginia and I spoke about this as well, we're gonna add in here, if you look at the bottom here, he didn't put this in here. Uh, he said that like the general scope of analysis could change. We should put in here, um, the, the piece about, what was the language you spoke about?
We agreed that we should amend uh, this particular agreement for a refurbishing option and I believe uh, the town of Woodbury also had that option for people to look at and for him to um, to incorporate in his um, his proposal. Um, and, and you, as you know, um, when we met with him, that was also something we had discussed maybe two or three years ago, so. I just think in fairness.
Yeah, no, no, I think.
To put it out there.
I think the board should be prepared, I mean, look, I think we need to have a refurbish option.
Yes.
I, but what I will say is that we should be prepared if the refurbish op, if they come back, because we're gonna have our structural engineer look at it too and it may not be possible to refurbish.
Right, I mean, just have the option and see what happens, don't worry, that's fine, thank you.
So if I can just make, um.
A motion to amend?
Yeah, I mean, I guess that, well, you know, we'll do this in the special meeting, but I'm gonna, before we vote on this, we're just gonna make a note to add in a bullet point to add a refurbish option to this agreement and he'll, he'll work on that.
So do you wanna make the motion or do you wanna?
Well, we'll do it in the special.
All right.
Yeah.
I'm ready, I was ready for it, so we don't forget.
No, don't forget, you remind me.
Okay.
Um, okay, ten, we have the Jackson Avenue Coleman Replacement, so this is the engineering agreement. You may recall we got a Bridge New York grant for Jackson Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
And this is just to provide the engineering, um, you know, put that agreement in place for the engineering work that's gonna be reimbursed by Bridge New York Grants. Cottage. The next one is Munger Cottage Improvement, so this is the engineering agreement. So right now MHE, um, they're gonna be, uh, we started very preliminarily. Um, as you know, we submitted a CDVG grant for the new section of Munger Cottage, but we're now looking at the old section, tearing it down, adding on about seventy-five hundred square feet of, you know, of new space based on what we think is, you know, future, you know, current, future anticipated needs. So uh, this would be to allow MHE to basically come up with like a basis for design, you know, give us some renderings, work out costs, et cetera. It'll allow us to apply for grants, to, you know, to, to do some other types of fundraising as well. Um, and just have a general idea of what it's gonna, you know, cost us to do this.
Do you, I, I know that um, the survey we had with this, not just the senior advisory committee, but the senior units, Munger Cottage, I had submitted it, I also gave Tommy a copy and when we had our preliminary, our first meeting, uh, with the, um, I, I can't stand using this acronym.
Oh, the Cornwall Recreational Advisory Committee?
Yeah, I, I just, it, it really bothers me, I, I just don't, I think we need to come up something because I, I just, whatever. Um, but um, I guess from our discussion, just clarify, um, do you want us to come back to, meet back in the committee with the original people that met with you, Tommy, Quinn, and prioritize the list? What, what do you want us to do because, um, we basically gave the list and I thought it was gonna be a list of, like Quinn was gonna work on, you know, the priorities of what we were gonna do. Um, just that we have a working document and I know she's gonna be drawing, but what do you suggest?
I think, I think what we need is a list of, um. I think, I think what we need is a list of, um, you know-
Like, there's things we can do right away and we don't have to, you know, say, apply for grants, you know, like you say, you have things we-
Well, I mean, the old section, we don't wanna do anything to any of the buildings in the old section like whatsoever, because, but the new, the new section is where we want, I mean, it, it may be something with like the one bathroom in that one back there-
We were talking about the toilets, I wanted to get this to-
But as far as like the old section, I mean, there's really not-
The older section, like, you can just remove the toilets, correct? Like, before you rip them off building, right? I mean, they use them. So they're supposed to sit for three years and just, I, I, no offense, but I, I just don't think they should sit for three years and look at disgusting toilets. I just think they deserve better.
But-
Okay, I'm sorry.
So what I would say is that what we need is, is that this isn't so much of a short-term, long-term, this is a-
I think seniors work more than three thousand hours, okay. We're spending on Starbucks, it's going on there.
I wouldn't say it's so much of a short-term, long-term priority list, 'cause I think, I mean, the short-term is the new section, the C D B G grant, you know, and some of the other things that we can do.
Sure.
The long-term is basically the seventy-five hundred square foot addition-
Absolutely.
But what we need to know is from the seniors, is what, what activities do you want to be able to do in the new space? Is it like an exercise room? Is it a, is it an arts and crafts room? Is it a this, is it a that? We'll get that from, you know, the youth perspective too.
Of course.
And then once we have all that together, they can decide like how big of a room, how many rooms, how to be divided up, what needs to be in the rooms. Do you want to add something?
I'm, I'm just, um, my understanding from discussions with you, um, I'm Rosemary Deseri, um, that we were gonna have a phase one and phase two.
Yes.
And you're talking about, you know, the seventy-five hundred square feet-
That's phase two.
Would be phase two. But is the engineering company clear on, we, the phase one-
Yes.
Is more immediate and, 'cause we have, we met, um, they did a site, um, review on, in May. There was a representative there going and looking at measurements and-
So-
I don't know what came of that.
Phase, so phase one-
Okay.
Is the Community Development Block Grant, which is, let's say, a hundred eighty thousand dollars.
Okay.
That's gonna be new, uh, new floors and the new sec, and the new section, um, building out more storage closet space, um, expanding the bathroom, um, we just got-
We also talked about the, uh, the vestabule, like-
We just got, I was gonna announce this later, but I'll say this now, SPOFIS was able to get us, um, fifty thou, I guess it was like a, like a state senate, uh, uh, senior center grant, who was able to give us fifty thousand dollars that can be used for, you know, as part of the small projects or big projects, so we have the option to put that into a vestabule, you know, in the new section, or to use it on, uh, you know, tables and chairs or other things. So we have to work through that, but that, you know-
Hundred eighty K.
Yeah, that, that's, that's phase one. And so phase one is, you know, obviously, I mean, look, if, you know, again and not to get, I'm not, I'm not trying to get political here, but look, if C D B G doesn't happen because it was eliminated and, you know, the White House's budget, the program's totally eliminated, so it is possible that if Congress carries that through, that there won't be C D B G funding for that, and the town will have to come up with another source of funding for that, so that is kind of like a question mark on that, but, you know, uh, but it doesn't mean that we're not gonna do it, it just means that we can't do C D B G.
Right, okay.
You know, I, I, I have, I, I would, you know, hopefully think that that wouldn't follow through, they would replace it with another source, but that is something that, you know, came to light. And so, you know, that's phase one. Phase two is the seventy-five hundred square feet that we're applying for this BRICS grant, that we're gonna, you know, seek money from the state senator for, much more than fifty grand, you know, you know, I'm not gonna give the amount that we're gonna ask them for, but it's not gonna be fifty grand, um, you know, as well as other sources of money. And that, that's obviously like a longer term, because that's probably a four million dollar project for the phase two, but I think phase one, we can certainly, if we don't end up getting C D B G, I'm sure that we can find a way to do that on our own as a town.
All right, so-
Yes.
To summarize, what I think you want from that committee is you want us to reconvene. It would be nice to get some sort of a sketch or, or something of what the footprint's like. I, I know that we're-
Let me ask, they had a very, very, they kinda like showed the current one-
I would appreciate something.
And then they showed like, all right, this is what seventy-five hundred square feet looks like.
Right.
But it's not like broken up, it just kinda shows what it looks like on the site plan.
Okay, I just don't wanna waste people's time and have a meeting and, and talk about the same things that we've already talked about.
Well, we would, it would be great to have what I would call like an activity list-
Sure, all right.
And then tie that back, if you think, like, for instance, if there's a bunch of exercise programs, then, then we need an exercise room.
Okay.
Right?
Makes sense.
Thank you.
So that's Munger Cottage. Twelve, Riverlight Park Improvement. So this is, and these engineering fees would come out of, um, as we're doing the engineering work for the New York Forward Projects, or for the Ice House, which is fully paid for, or for the Ice, or for the, uh, gazebo bridge. So basically, this engineering agreement, um, how it lumps a bunch of things together, we passed a bond on it already. So that's the Ice House, the gazebo bridge, um, you know, it's basically these, these three things that we're gonna try to work on this year, but we have all the funding for these projects, and this is where the engineering money would be built, it would be, you know, the grant funds. But we need to, you know, to get the engineering agreement in place so they can, you know, get the designs and get ready to go to bed.
Could you, are you reminding where the budget comes for the playground, the new playground?
That's all from Senator's booth. And just to, uh, uh, for those that don't, I, I, I think I shared this at the last meeting, that stuff's being, what, delivered the first week of September, I believe, um, and we then have a little bit of site prep work we have to do for an install and I guess completion somewhere before October, I think? If everything goes well.
If everything goes-
Yeah.
According to-
Well, it'll be, it'll be delivered to the, you know, Buildings and Grounds Garage over there. Okay. We have this request for, and we just get, uh- I have to say, engineers really like their building contracts, you know?
And they're not allowed to change them either.
That's right, it's always, it's clear.
They do try to change it, I know, it's your own risk. All right, number thirteen. Okay, so, um, we have an email from Jennifer Passato, who lives on one oh one Currie Road. So if you're on Main Street and you're going towards the middle school, you go down to Currie, and I believe this is the second house on the right, and right to here-
Is this a subdivision? Or no?
No, we, we, this is, so let me see, you're going, here it is, you got a house here, and then you got another house here that's all over a little bit.
Okay.
Um, it's before you get to the most expensive retaining wall that I hate, that is starting soon.
It's gonna look so pretty.
It is, it'd be the best retaining wall in the-
And no one's gonna be able to see, 'cause you have to come that down. 'Cause you're walking, I guess.
Yeah. And so, um, but yeah, so I guess they have an issue with, uh, the current system's insufficient. Yeah, so, so it's basically, um, you know, the tanks only five hundred gallons, the beach fields are too small for the system. They'd like to be an out-of-district user, so they would, um, have to go into, uh, Cornwall sewer district one. This would be similar, I think, to, you know, anytime we do this, where they would have to put an escrow down, then there would have to be, there would be, and, well-
They'd have to work with the attorneys to-
So, you know, I asked Steve about this, and I don't think it requires, technically, they're in, well, no, I mean, why would they, if they were in the district, this is just a connection-
I think there's a legal fee that you have to pay-
They're already in the districts, and this is really just a matter of like coming up with a design, oh, they're outside of the district.
They're outside user, they, they're all, um, from experience, you have to pay the law firm to actually do that.
Well, yeah, that's what the escrow's for.
Right.
And I think, I think we, uh, we require putting down, I think, like five thousand dollars.
It's difficult, yes.
So, um, I guess the question is, we could, she wanted this on for tonight, so I don't think she's here, um, but, um, you know, certainly if this is a rush, um, I mean, I guess, you know, do we set an escrow tonight? Do we wait till August?
I would suggest that you set the escrow, and then she can either make that deposit.
Yeah, 'cause that'll allow us to proceed, because you guys aren't gonna review anything until we get the escrow.
Correct, and that would not hold her up.
Yeah, this way, at least she has the choice if she's gonna do it or not.
Does that require, does that also involve the Building Department as well, Tommy?
Um, not that, not to my knowledge, no.
Okay, I, I just, okay.
I mean, they might have-
You wanna ask you one?
They might have to verify that it's something with the connection, or I don't know, something that it's like, but that's a Gary question, which we can easily-
Gary's, yeah.
Um, okay, so I will put that on later. All right, next we have a request for out-of-district su, oh, I'm sorry, police department. That's right, you know what, if we don't have any for many, many years, all of a sudden we've got two. No, um, we've got, uh, police department surplus vehicle. So the chief is requesting to surplus, um, the twenty-seventeen Ford Police Interceptor suffered major engine failure and is no longer in, uh, warranty.
That's not the one that's out in the back there?
No, it's, uh, it's in a shop because we're using equipment from it.
Oh, so you're just like, like a chop shop kind of thing?
Well, a safe walk.
I'm just curious.
Without the name, it would come a piece of shit.
No, no, it's actually very resourceful. No, I don't see it as a bad-
Yeah, I mean, there's thousands of dollars in lights and, and mounts and wiring.
Sounds like something out of Mad Max.
Okay, thank you. No, I, I thought there was something, there was one in the back that-
It's not like we're taking the engine and putting it, it's, it's all accessories.
Oh, okay.
Next they had microphones for the courtroom, so just, um, 'cause I, you know, this was a question that one of the board members had, um, so we have a, we have a town hall capital fund that has almost two hundred thousand dollars in it, that-
You found this?
Well, it's, it's in, well, yeah, we have very, we have various funds, you know, that-
Like a mattress.
That, well, look, sometimes what happens is, and this happens with the town, is that we get a grant, but we wanna do the work first, so we borrow the money, we do it, we submit, and we've paid off the grant, then the check comes in, and then there's a surplus in the account.
I understand, okay.
So that this happens actually all the time, believe it or not, so then you just take it and apply it to the next. So, so anyway, we do have the money to pay for this, and that's the fund that we come out of, which would basically be, it would be the town hall fund.
Did we vote on this?
No, which were, so you may recall, we've had, um, the village has this microphone system, and we used to have a microphone system, but it's no longer functional. So, Tim, do you wanna talk about that?
I do have a question before Tim starts.
Yeah.
Is this, um, the, microphones are gonna be used by us only, or for anybody who takes a video?
In this room? So, probably, I'll stop and board.
Okay.
To see if we're using here.
Of course, yeah, everyone uses the-
All right, so it's not just the town?
Yeah, and it also helps them too to capture the, the sound better, and for the audience to hear it better, 'cause sometimes people can't hear us, you know?
We live stream.
Yeah, you hear it better when you-
So we have, all right, so we, um, so we have two quotes, so we have the one from Generation Video Productions, coming in at five thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars, um, and then we have one from Nearfield that's coming in at fifteen thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
That's a number.
So I think it's a pretty clear winner on this one.
I also like the fact that, um, it's, it's the same, it's, Rodney's also doing the video and everything, it makes sense that we have, and, and the price, yes, is definitely-
I mean, I think he, you know, he's worked in here and he knows the system, and just, you know, you know, Rodney, Rodney's like a fixture here too.
The only thing I wanna bring out, the point I wanna bring out, the whole, it's what he understands, even though it's five thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars, you know, for Rodney's bid, and I don't, it's considerably higher.
Yes.
But undermined is the last line, his, be, to be, it's not box, of the, what I'm gonna be sitting, there's a, there's a, a, a box of that, and I, and that is not working up properly or, or functional at all, but that may have to be placed for the additional two thousand dollars, for the sure, so this could potentially be seven thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars, sorry, five thousand.
Yeah, no, thanks for that, yeah.
So we would probably have to do like a change order if that's the case, or?
We should probably approve it, um, for-
Continue, move that up to-
Yeah, for that, you know, up to that amount, should we need to-
He just put that in there, because, you know, he hasn't a hundred percent tested up, the box over there, but he looked at it and it seemed to be an operational order, so he doesn't think that's gonna be the case, but it's just to cover it, so-
I was hoping that this was gonna go away, because, you know, I can't, I can't really spread out, you know, over here, so, you know, my legs are-
Maybe it will extend.
I can mount it differently.
And this, maybe Mr. Gadda, you know, has smaller legs, but-
I think Rodney can move it someplace else.
We'll figure something out.
We could try and do something.
Please, Lord.
That's funny.
I'll make a note.
All right, next we have, uh, R T E L E D light upgrade, so, um, it looks like we've got, there are five uncaught lights, uh, back when we were doing this, um, you know, lighting upgrade, and, um, you know, they're basically at the highway garage. And so when we were doing the original inventory, you know, we got the lighting districts, and we got Riverlight Park and all the town grounds here, but these were just out in, you know, at the highway garage.
Right, and we actually paid them to do this.
We did, and they missed it, and so-
That long, yeah.
And so, um, you know, but given that we're planning on a, a redo of the highway garage at some point in the near future, I mean, just in talking to at least two of the board members, we don't think it really makes sense for us to go and like do this upgrade on just these five that are kind of like standalone, you know, they're not, they're not part of lighting districts around, I guess they probably won't build to your, uh-
The port, ported sensation?
We had Ray, we had Ray put in a light last year.
Yeah.
Anyway, up there, it's like, I, I mean, it's bright, so it takes care of everything we need.
Oh, the one that he put in?
Mm-hmm. So it's like was updated, it's like, okay.
I don't, I don't think it makes sense to, I think this is probably his decision to make.
Not that they like to make.
Since we are on the topic of lights, um, something just came to my mind, um, a couple of residents from the Blood, uh, Bloods and Down in Cornwall have reached out, and they did actually come here and they signed a petition about ten. They were, were not happy about how much light the, um, giant enormous, um, posts produced during the nighttime. So I just wanna know, where are we with that?
So I know this is a, um, private property, um, I did speak with, um, Ray at RPC, and he has-
Private property?
Yeah, that's, that's on our property, that's the-
No, it is on the plaza, I mean, when you-
So he told me that he had tilted it down as much as he, as he should, that was my understanding, but-
Correct, correct, so, yeah, maybe he did that a couple years, gonna have to cut it off, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, but that's-
I know, I know some of the people that have called in, so it's definitely helped them out.
So I'm asking, what is the update on that?
Uh, well, it's, the lights aren't gonna go in all of this, go in all of this, so pushing back towards that, so, so another option that names mention is to put, to put like hoods on them, like side hoods, which might help out, or-
So, I, I mean, not-
You have to go back to the property owner and ask them to do that.
Yeah, probably over the manager, I see.
So that's, yeah, so there's been a discussion. I mean, I guess here's the thing. So the building inspector was out there, and he didn't seem to think that there was a code violation. Um, but, you know, the neighbors across the street differ on that, and I think light sometimes is like in the eye of the, you know, in the, uh, eye of the beholder. And, I mean, look, I've been out there, it definitely seems bright to me. We've let the property manager know about this. Um, you know, I know that they work with RPC Electric, that, I think that's who they contract with.
He did exactly.
Bucket truck. And so, you know, Ray and, um, I believe Mr. Vergiani were supposed to be talking about, you know, fixing this, but really is contingent upon, you know, the, until we have like a violation issued by the code enforcement officer, I can't compel the property owner to do anything. And so he knows about it, and they certainly don't want to tick off residents across the street. And so they're, they're working on it, and I think we let this go just a little bit longer, but then, you know, like, I will, I'll, I'll nudge the...
I know he told me he had adjusted his best to save him.
I'll nudge the property owner to, you know, to engage, you know, the, the company to make the change. But beyond that, we're kind of in this like it's private property and they have to...
Those, those lights, those lights have been lowered twice.
Yeah, I, I, I see that.
So we really can't get enough, the next step is to put those like hoods on them, yeah.
Or another option is to just totally replace the lights with a different kind of light, which is a much more expensive option than the hoods. So I know that, but I will poke, um, if you all want to remind me...
I do.
To poke Ray to do it. And it could also be, look, Ray's a very busy guy, so, you know, he's gonna...
Well, it really is about the owner of the property, because with the owner of the property, they would have to pay for any of this.
Yes.
So I would think in fairness, to be honest, the owner...
Ten residents, I, I do remember their petition and signatures. They asked me, and I said, I'll, I'll follow up, so, thank you for the information.
Um, okay, next we have the special event permit, any kind of fitness fundraiser. So we did have the, um, we had the Public Safety Planning Committee. You can sort of see this right here. Um, you know, nobody took exception with the route. We're not going to be able to close off all the streets and do all that stuff. It's gonna have to be similar in there to what happened with, you know, Dragon Day when the school district had a, had a similar run, and you had, uh, we had barricades in some places and we...
Yeah, we had like two officers help out major crossings.
Yeah, but it's not, you know, we can't, we just don't have the manpower to be able to close off the roads for this. So it's going to be more of like a Dragon Day situation. But they didn't take any exception to, you know, to allowing this to go forward. So do you, do you envision having to bring in, uh, people on overtime for this? Or is this like you can handle it mostly with, I'm talking about the chief's...
Yeah, I mean, but, I mean, three hour, maybe four or five, six hundred dollars in overtime. Best case scenario, two hundred dollars. It's just all dependent on whether part timers take...
Yeah.
The shift or the full timers.
What do you tell me, you know?
I don't think after Joe's...
It's not blocking off roads.
We're just gonna throw some barrels down during working hours. So, very minimal for us.
Is there any, Tim, you're in this meeting.
Yeah.
Any, any, any questions? I mean, I think this was going to be a many, many, many thousand dollar, you know, endeavor to close off, you know, multiple streets, but it sounds like you could do it with just, what, I don't know, one guy on for three hours, or?
Yeah.
So, well, so does the route end at Academy or is it in the...
So we're, we're basically, basically, we're...
It ends?
Yes.
Starts and ends there.
Oh, it's supposed to leave, okay, thank you.
Yep. So, okay, so we have that. Any, any questions? Look, they have this, they have their insurance. You know, we have the public safety meeting, so we think unless there's any issues. All right, then we have this, um, I apologize, I just gave this to you. This is going to be, this is the Storking Art Center bond reduction request. So, you know, I mean, we're getting, uh, used to doing these apps. We've been doing it for the golf course and for Storking Art Center for a little bit now. But basically, as you know, the process works. There's a, there's a clearing grading permit that's usually tied to the SWIP, and, you know, as they do work, um, they can apply for a reduction in the money that's held in the escrow account or in the performance bond, et cetera. So what happens is their engineer submits this breakdown to our engineer who reviews. So in this case, it was David Fritz with N H E. He did the site inspection. He comes back and he says, all right, well, Chris Lago's letter is accurate. Um, I take no exception to you reducing the amount of the bond from one sixty-two down to one thirty, you know, down to twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, which is basically, um, you can see what that will go to. The topsoil seating erosion control, and then, um, uh, as builds are record, so we have to update our as builds before we can close this out. That will cover part of that, and then the ten percent contingency, so this is...
I remember this one. Okay, this adds up to twenty-seven thousand. I'm just...
Yeah, twenty-seven thousand five hundred.
Okay. So it's going to be reduced to thirty, one thirty-four, five fourteen, correct?
No, we're going to reduce it by one thirty-four, five fourteen from one sixty-two. If you look at the...
Yeah, I'm looking.
So there's currently one sixty-two, fourteen, and then we're going to reduce it by one thirty-four, five fourteen.
Does this, I know, this, I'm sorry, please forgive me, I'm still looking at this, and I see twenty-seven, five hundred.
Yes.
I don't see one thirty-four.
Well, that's how much we're reducing it by, so...
One sixty-two, fourteen minus one thirty-four, five fourteen?
Gets you twenty-seven, five hundred.
All right.
That's, it's just that the math is like in different places.
It's, yeah, exactly. That's, thanks. I was, it just took my break. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's more clear on the legislation than it is on the...
Ah, I'm, that's right, then it's, it's always... Okay, thanks.
Okay. Okay, uh... Planning Board... Okay, so, you know, planning board vacancy. So look, you know, many of you may have heard about the passing of Bill Gray, who, you know, served honorably on the town's planning board for twenty-six years. Um, he was first appointed in nineteen ninety-nine. You know, I think he's done a great job over the years. Uh, I spoke to Chairman Noveski earlier today, and he said that his presence on the committee will be greatly missed. Um, you know, and obviously whoever we end up appointing will have big shoes to fill. But I think we definitely want to, you know, thank Bill for his service and his family, you know, as well, because, you know, that's a lot of work over twenty-six years, uh, being on the planning board. And, you know, I'm sure you, you know, feel the same way about Bill. Um, and, uh, you know, we're gonna have to move forward now and, uh, you know, put this out to, you know, out to the public to, you know, find someone else to appoint to that spot. I don't know if anyone else has anything else than what I have.
I mean, I think, uh, am I correct, I'll dominate, the planning board is not meeting in August?
Yes, that's right.
That, that is correct. So really, we have some time...
Yeah, we're getting out to the public.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, he's a very, very wonderful man. It's just a little awkward, you know, attending his service yesterday and placing him.
Has left from his term.
I, I don't have that in front of me. Um, I want to say that he was recently reappointed, my last couple of months.
I already reappointed him last year. Yeah, and that was, he was a very, very good person, and that he will do this.
So that's that. Um, I guess just real quick, I guess I just want to go over this real quick. Um, so the, the, the threshold Cornwall art exhibit, um, so, so I guess just real quick on this, um, because this is coming up. Um, starting next, um, as you know, we've got the cocktail party on the bridge, which is next Thursday. Then we have, um, you know, Friday, the eighteenth, um, there's going to be a midsummer art stroll from five thirty, uh, five thirty to eight P M. I think many of you have probably seen, uh, differing works of art, so I guess kind of just to bring this, you know, full circle. Um, so just, I guess, you know, ticking down the list, because when we approved this back, you know, earlier in the year, it was basically, it would be allowed to go forward as long as essentially we had the insurance in place. We have, we have contracts, we have, you know, we have all those things basically in place. You know, before, like, they would be allowed to put stuff on our property. So, just, I guess, an update on the insurance. So we do have certs from the artists. Um, the town's insurance, um, all of the information, again, these are new artists. So we're actually gonna have, there's gonna be, um, five spots on town property where we're gonna have art. And so the, the different artists, you know, and their information, it is all with the Reese Group currently. Um, Taniqua has it. Um, she was out, uh, last week on vacation, back, I believe, today, tomorrow. She's supposed to be, um, getting us the certs for the art. Um, the artist agreements, we did make a change. So last year, you may recall, we had in there that the town was going to be required for moving and installation and all that stuff, and that is no longer the case. The new agreements have the artist responsible for install and for, you know, them responsible for moving and storage and all of that stuff. So that, that has been changed based on our experience from last year. We've then got, in terms of the, the town's responsibility and install, my understanding from talking to Buffy and Eileen is that, um, we're going to be responsible for moving, um, the metal plate to the top of the hill over there, drilling four holes in it.
Three.
Oh, three. Um, and then down there, the other thing that, and this is that I, I, I had a discussion with Buffy and Eileen before tonight's meeting, just to try to get like up to date on everything. Um, and so as far as the one other, I believe it's Michelle Brody's, there's like these like five or six, like, what, metal, like, statuettes or things. So they're gonna go into the ground over there in the hill. Um, they do not have to go on, on plates. Um, we can put gravel over the grass. The artist doesn't care if the grass is going to be cut or not. They think it'll actually look interesting to have the grass grow through the gravel. Uh, as far as the chains and the signs, um, if we're waiting to hear back, if we have to put chains up, it'll be something that the artist is responsible for. Um, it'll just be like a chain that'll go in the ground around it. And if the, and if the insurance company says that we have to put a sign up that says, you know, uh, do not touch, this is not for playing, then we'll have to put those, it will not us, they will, because they're responsible.
Can I clarify what you just said? So if the town's insurance provider...
Yes.
Tells the town that they're responsible for making sure there's chains around the artwork, you are going to delegate the responsibility for completion of that act to the artist?
Well, they're responsible for install. That's in the contract, per the contract.
And we don't, we have a responsibility to ensure it's...
Do they have insurance?
Completed in a way that's consistent with our contract for insurance, because it's not their contract for insurance, it's requiring it, it's ours.
I mean, our insurance never gave like specific, like, this is what the chain has to be, and this is what the... So I, I mean, I, I don't know.
So the artist doesn't have any insurance? It's the town that is providing?
No, the artist, they all have...
The artist is the provider of the certs.
Or like secondary, or is that...
We have to put in some...
No, we're additional insured.
That's what I meant, additional insured.
And we have to ensure that, you know, the contents be on our property.
And so we already, I remember last spring, we, we have a contract for insurance. And at the time, we had three installed pieces of art.
Yeah, we're not gonna have five.
That inc, that covered that. So does our insurance, um, cover any art that's installed there? Or does that, and that policy no longer exist because those art pieces are not there, and now we need new ones for the new art? Or do you know?
So our policy carried over having three, you know, having the three art exhibits. Now we're gonna have five.
Right.
So...
Well, okay, and will that, um, cost us additional money?
So last year it cost us, if I recall, like originally we thought it was gonna be, oh my God, all this money. It ended up being like twenty-five or thirty dollars per, per piece of art. So we expect that...
And if there is an additional cost, um, do we have to vote on that? Is that something we already have allocated or something else?
So we definitely have money to pay for the, you know, the addition, just come out of the insurance line. We have the...
Do we have to vote for it? That was the question.
Yeah, but do we have to come back?
Well, I guess, I guess the...
Like fifty, you know, fifty hundred dollars if it's in us, do we...
I mean, I, I guess the question is, do we just, you know, have a vote, will we get to the special meeting to authorize, you know, the supervisor to sign additional, you know, to add additional to pieces of art to the, you know, to the town's insurance policy and to authorize the supervisor to, to sign the contracts with the artists? I mean, I think, I think maybe just to be, that's, that's something that we ought to...
The artist has, has to get insurance for their artwork.
They do.
That, okay, but does that cover the work on town property or do we need to have a disservice or something? Because I thought that policy that Ken's talking about, that expired, that's gone now, because those were three pieces.
It was through...
Did we even renew it? That's what Ken's getting.
Well, I'm just wondering if it, if it doesn't matter what's there, does the policy, does the, because the policy knows we have three pieces of art in various places in the town, does the policy continue to cover the town for loss or liability or injury, um, even if we switch out the pieces? Or was it piece dependent? So the minute you take the piece out, is that, does that policy no longer exist protecting the town if you install something different?
Sure.
I hope it's not that complex. I hope it's a little more generalized.
I think to be, to be, to be saved...
And we're increasing, that's why. But I remember that, that the policies themselves last year were, they were de minimis in cost ultimately, even though there was a, a fear initially that they were not. Um, so I'm not that concerned. I'm just trying to do it right, that's all.
So maybe we, and I guess I'll defer to Dominic on this, do we just, you know, make a motion to authorize the supervisor to add five, five, you know, additional, um, not policies, you know, five additional, uh, what do you call it?
Pieces of art.
Pieces of art to, you know, covered by the town's policy and authorize the supervisor to sign the, the five artist agreements, which...
That would cover it.
Okay.
Okay, but my question to you, real quick, is that if that's the case, then why does the artist have to have insurance on their own? Priest has to be on town property, that's to be insured by the town.
I think they always have been insured.
We require it.
Yeah, regardless of where they're putting them.
What? Why?
Well, because, I mean, the town requires, that is, I, I don't know what that means.
Right, right, I mean, they're essentially double insured, right?
That's, that's what I've kept him.
Yeah.
But we just have to make sure that the artist, because something happens to a priest, like, you know, like, for instance, that one priest that was in the village, and actually got water during the winter time, because of the cold, I said, and it cracked and broke.
Really? Is that the piece on Walden or was it...
Yes, it was, a piece on Walden. And, you know, then they say, no, they said, oh, you guys had to fix it. I said, well, that's on us.
Well, I mean, yes, and then Walden and Eileen, and, you know, they, they dealt with it, so... But again, that's not in this...
And there's five total priests, I mean, it's actually going to the town property.
But...
Of five, because there's a couple of times in the village, too.
No, it's only, the village is getting one.
Oh, yeah, one, one, that's it?
Yeah, the village is getting this, like, this tower looking thing there.
Yeah.
We've got, Vivian Collins has one that's staying on the bridge. Michelle Brody has this, the steel like ta, tower thing. Um, Aurora Robeson has two. Jack Henry has this, it looks like, um, like, three pieces of concrete kind of going all different ways. And then, and I'm, I'm being terrible with this.
To be describing the art.
Yeah. I, I'm the wrong person to be describing art, okay? I love, you know, I like art, but I don't know. I took like Intro to Art History in college, and that's my extent of, uh, you know. I, I did, I just got an A, but, uh...
I got a B, and I was so mad because I got all of A's in the rest of that class.
But Art History is like, it's not like this kind of art. It's mostly like going back to, you know, yeah, yeah. So, okay, so when we get there, then it looks like we need to make a motion to add five... Art. Policies and agreements. Okay, so that was, that was what I had for the, you know, came in last minute situation. Okay. So now, so hopefully we can get through the, is, is there any public comments on the agenda items before I move to the special meeting? We can start voting.
Do you have public comments here, or do you wait till the end of everything?
Uh, I mean...
It does say public.
Do you have, yeah, I mean, it's not, yes, you can trigger, yeah.
Right there.
Um, I am ad libbing it this year. My bottom line remains having a conversation about climate change and how it affects equalization in the state be considered locally, so that we are in the forefront of this as opposed to, uh, creating a, an ongoing nightmare that'll snowball at both the local and the state level. Um, I am approaching it from ethics this year. Um, I have been afforded a sexual harassment warning letter by the town board. From that point forward, I have had my foil, uh, rights constrained, and the town has paid lawyers to do what should be my right. Now, that's answering to the climate change stuff. But you guys have taken hours of office. It is our civic duty to do stuff for the betterment and the preservation and the furtherance of the common good. We are not doing that. We are obfuscating. I have no idea what this is doing to the presumptive, our, our assessor, who has lied after being sworn in, and our planning board, which has denied that I even have any rights because I didn't show up, and that's not even in the law. You got a mess, and I think it's stupid to be running up these expenses or pending expenses. So, how the board wants to handle it, your supervisor, our supervisor is unfortunately right in the middle of this. I think we act into it. And this goes back to Richard Randazzo in, in the contract with our assessor. So there's stuff to be sorted out. I'm going to be doing what I can with the county tax, um, director of property taxes at the county level. If that fails, I'll be going to the state level. And in terms of ethics, I plan to use our board of ethics and the county board of ethics with a possible appeal to the, the state. That'll be probably in November sometime. So it's a heads up. I have no idea what I'm really talking about. I have no idea what I'm really talking about, but it's in the law. And, um, I really wish we could just have a common conversation, a civil conversation. And, and begin to address the fact that we are not paying attention to what climate change is doing to property values. And how that impact, impacts equalization rates, not only here in town, but at the county level and ultimately at the state level. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, okay, so moving on to the. You're going through this because I think we have to move back and forth through those two packets here. So first we have a resolution to adopt the local law, the land use moratorium. Whereas the town board has before it, for consideration of proposed local law entitled the local law establishing six moratoriums on the submission and processing of applications for land use approvals within the town of Cornwall. Whereas following due notice, the town board held a public hearing on the proposed local law. Whereas said proposed local law has been duly deferred to the county planning department under general municipal law subsection two thirty-nine into the town planning board pursuant to provisions of the town code. Now therefore, be resolved as follows. One, that the town board does hereby adopt the above local law. Two, that the said local law shall be effective upon filing in the office of the secretary of the state of Cornwall. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Just.
Sure. If I may, I just want to clarify to the record that this is a type two action under SECRE.
Yeah.
So there's no EAF, there's no negative declaration that's required as a part of the adoption of this. Most local laws, you know, or especially ones that affect the environment do. But in this case, the state has said that this is exempt from any environment.
Thank you for that clarification.
Dominic, I just like to ask you a quick question. I was going through the warrant and, and, you know, just looking at, you know, the planning board and, and the projects that they're, you know, that are in process. So any of the, the projects that are in process right now, right? They are not going to be impacted by this moratorium or, or there's? I know that the ones that are designated, but I did notice that there were ones that were, you know.
There are several projects that would be affected by the moratorium.
Even though they're in the process?
Correct.
Okay.
Because that can approve for. Yeah.
Right, it's not approval, but they can, they're still meeting with the planning board and, 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 right? Am I correct?
Uh, well, if the moratorium is adopted, there are certain projects of certain scale.
It would stop it.
Correct.
Okay, I just need clarification.
Yeah, I would say there is a, um, an outlet or a mechanism should somebody feel that they have a hardship, which, you know, we are required by.
It would come to before the town board.
Which we do, and then they, you know, they would come in, they would make their appeal. And then the board would have to make a, a decision. So there, there is that outlet that I should.
No, I just want, like I said, I know these projects were going through.
Of course. That is important. Um, yes, yes, you can.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Okay, so next up I have the, the resolution to adopt the amended local law, commercial audio visual production. Whereas the town board has before it, for consideration of proposed local law entitled the local law refilling and reenacting town formal, town code article four entitled commercial audio visual production permits of chapter one fifteen A entitled public events and audio visual productions. To simplify and clarify the terms and provisions therein. Whereas following due notice, the town board held a public hearing on the proposed local law. Now therefore, be resolved as follows. That the town board does hereby adopt the proposed local law. Two, that the said local law shall take effect upon filing of the same in the office of the secretary of state in Albany. Can I get a motion to approve?
So, second. Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
And Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Okay, now we're gonna go through a whole bunch of, um, of, uh, for the USDA buyout program.
Mr. McCarty, can we waive the reading of each of them?
Yes.
Do we have to vote on the waiver of the reading of each and every single one of them? Or can we blanket waive the reading and then go with them?
Blanket waive the reading, but you have to vote on them individually.
Sure, okay, all right, let's do that. If I could make a motion to waive the reading of the, um, what is it?
The negative, negative.
The negative declaration resolutions for the USDA buyout program.
So, second.
Yes.
Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes, so this is a resolution making a negative declaration under SECRE for purchase of forty Clara Avenue property. Now therefore, be resolved as follows. That the town board accepts and approves said EAF parts one and two. And the supervisor is hereby authorized to sign the same. Two, that after considering all information presented to it, including the EAF, the town board adopts a negative declaration attached here too. Can I get a motion to approve?
So, second. Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Next up, I have a resolution making a negative declaration under SECRE for the purchase of three Hasbrook Avenue property. Now therefore, be resolved as follows. That the town board accepts and approves said EAF parts one and two. The supervisor is hereby authorized to sign the same. Two, that after considering all the information presented to it, including the EAF, the town board adopts a, a negative declaration attached here too. Can I get a motion to approve?
So, second. Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Next, I have a resolution making a negative declaration under SECRE for purchase of four Hasbrook Avenue property. Now therefore, be resolved as follows. That the town board accepts and approves the said EAF parts one and two. The supervisor is hereby authorized to sign the same. Two, that after considering all the information presented to it, including the EAF, the town board adopts a negative declaration attached here too. Can I get a motion to approve?
So, second. Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Okay, next I have a resolution making a negative declaration under SECRE for the purchase of six Hasbrook Avenue property. Now therefore, be resolved as follows. One, that the town board accepts and approves the said EAF parts one and two. And the supervisor is hereby authorized to sign the same. Two, that after considering all the information presented to it, including the EAF, the town board adopts a negative declaration attached here too. Can I get a motion to approve?
So, second. Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. I think this is the last one, I hope it is. Resolution making a negative declaration under SECRE for the purchase of ten Hasbrook Avenue property. Now therefore, be resolved as follows. That the town board accepts and approves the said EAF parts one and two. And the supervisor is hereby authorized to sign the same. And two, that after considering all the information presented to it, including the EAF, the town board adopts the negative declaration attached here too. Can I get a motion to approve?
So, second. Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Resolution making a negative declaration under SECRE for the purchase of eleven, of eleven Hasbrook Avenue. Now therefore, be resolved as follows. One, that the town board accepts and approves the said EAF parts one and two. And the supervisor is hereby authorized to sign the same. Two, that after considering all the information presented to it, including the EAF, the town board adopts a negative declaration attached here too. Can I get a motion to approve?
So, second. Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Okay, um, now I've got a resolution authorizing a request for qualifications for an administrative on New York Ford grant. Can I get a motion to waive the reading of the grant?
So, second. Chris McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Now therefore, be resolved as follows. That the town board does not accept any proposals submitted to date on the request for qualifications, but will retain such quote for consideration at the extended submission date on the request for qualifications. Two, that the town board does hereby authorize the town supervisor and the town attorney to republish the request for qualifications set in a date and time when the submissions will be publicly opened in a grand lair. Can I get a motion to approve?
So, second. Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Next, I have a resolution authorizing requests for qualifications of the New York Ford grant regarding professional environmental services. Can I get a motion to waive the reading of the motion?
Second. Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Now therefore, be resolved as follows. That the town board does not accept any proposals submitted to date on the request for qualifications, but will retain such quote for consideration at the extended submission date on the request for qualifications. And two, that the town board does hereby authorize the town supervisor and the town attorney to republish the request for qualifications and have the set in a date and time when the submissions will be publicly opened in a grand lair. Can I get a motion to approve?
So, second.
Second.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Next, I have change order number four. Can I get a motion to approve change order number four?
So, second. Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Next, I have, can I get a motion to approve Millennium Strategies writing, uh, the Brick New York application for the four thousand dollar grant fee?
So, second.
Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes, sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Um, can I get a motion to add the, what do we call this?
To amend?
To amend the contract.
The pool replacement engineering agreement to include a refurbishing option.
Okay, can I get a motion to add that to the contract?
So, move.
Second. Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes, can I get a motion to approve the pool engineering agreement with John Petrusini?
So, second.
Yeah.
Um, except with the addition of the option.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we did that.
Yes, sorry.
Yes.
Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. I guess that she was going to do this, so she put this, she didn't want to print all the engineering agreements twice, so I just. I don't blame her because she couldn't see what this looked like. I said, it's engineering agreements, uh. If I could get a motion to approve Jackson Avenue Call Where Replacement Engineering Agreement.
So, second. Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Can I get a motion to approve the Monver Cottage improvement engineering agreement?
So, move. Second. Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Last, these engineering agreements, can I get a motion to approve the Riverlight Park improvements for engineering agreement?
So, move.
So, move.
Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yeah.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Okay, this is the police department surplus vehicle. Can I get a motion to declare?
Go back to thirteen? What are we doing with the other sewer, the thirteen?
Thirteen is my, that's the fourth.
Oh, my.
Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll.
My apologies, no, no.
You're on the other list.
My apologies, sorry, it was.
I believe we're rolling on that.
Yeah, that's, I guess we have one meeting.
Now we're just always, yeah.
Now we all know why we have another session and then.
Okay, gotcha. My apologies, I'm sorry.
If I, um, so now we have the police department surplus vehicle. Can I get a motion to declare, um, the, the twenty seventeen Ford Police Interceptor SUV surplus?
So, move.
Second. Ms. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Can I get a motion, uh, next I have the microphones up, uh, for the courtroom. Can I get a motion to approve up to the, to, um, seven thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars for Generation Video Productions and additional two thousand as if we can't use it.
Five thousand, two, five thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I'm not pushing up to.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna be approving up, okay, we can, however you wanna do it. So if I can get a, a motion to approve five thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. And if we have to replace the mixer amplifier, that would be what, additional two thousand?
Could be like a change order, wouldn't it?
Well, we're gonna do it now, then if we have to.
Well, it could be either way. I think the supervisor's suggestion is, is that if it's needed, then it's approved now.
Up to.
Correct. But only, only if it's needed, so.
Well, that's, that's fair enough.
Right, we don't want to like delay this another.
No, I think, second.
Okay.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?[1594.14]
Yes.
Ms. Edelina Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes, okay. Next up we have, can I get a motion to approve the anytime fitness fumero?
Second. Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelina Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Copy the resolution from the. Yeah, if you don't have that.
I don't know, but I don't understand.
For the.
The one we were.
The bottom of the.
Down to 27,000. 162.
Yeah, exactly. No, I just looked at the resolution. Thank you, sorry.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Whereas in 2024 Stocking Art Center posted performance security for completion of said improvements in the form of a cash deposit with the town in the amount of $162,014 under a performance security agreement. Whereas, the current owners have requested a reduction in the performance security of $134,514 based upon completion of a portion of work of the property. And whereas, the town's engineering consultants have reviewed the request for a reduction in the performance security and have granted a report recommending the town board approve the requested reduction and accept the submittal of the reduced performance security. Now therefore be resolved as follows. One, that the town board approves the proposed reduction of the performance security from $162,014 to $27,500. Two, that the performance security variance shall begin to be amended accordingly. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second. Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelina Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Now we just have a couple of, so I guess let's do the, can I get a, this is from the request about district user sewer usage. Can I get a motion to to set the escrow at $5,000 for the 101 Currie Road Cornwall out of sewer district, you know, fee? And, yeah, make a motion to set the escrow at $5,000.
So that, that would be just, just for clarity, that would be initial escrow.
Yeah.
The fee is just to pay for the town's consultants in reviewing the request and processing it.
Yes.
Second. Did you? Is that a move?
No.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelina Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. All right, next I have, can I get a motion to approve the town adding five pieces of art to its existing insurance policy and for the town supervisor to sign the five artist agreements?
Second. Second. Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelina Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Can I get a motion to approve warrant number seven?
Second.
All right.
Okay. Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelina Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. All right, we have committee reports. Do we want to get through these pretty quickly?
I don't have any, so good to go.
Do you want to start?
Yeah, you want to start.
So the planning board, we already talked about this, but Phil Gray passed away on June 25th. Last night at 1:01, there was a moment of silence for him. So just on behalf of the town board, I want to publicly thank Mr. Gray and thank his family for supporting him for 26 years that he served our town. The planning board does an enormous amount of work, it's incredibly complex. And the people who sit on our planning board are entirely qualified and overqualified to sit there and be our regulatory check on all of these projects that come before them. So I'm enormously grateful for the board itself and really humbled that Mr. Gray would have served us in such distinction for 26 years. It's really an example of what we all should be doing in the community, finding a place where we fit really well and serving each other in that capacity. So we can all take that as an example. So thank you, Mr. Gray. There was a discussion about the moratorium that we enacted today from the planning board accepting that and recommending that we accept it. There's no planning board meeting in August, we already talked about that. The building department in June did 79 onsite inspections. That's up from 67 last month and that, and the month before, was, that was a 30% increase. So we're watching the building department in the last three months more than double their onsite inspection workload. So I'm hoping it's just because of the season and it's summer, but they're really, really under stressors. So if they're not getting back to you right away or if you feel like someone looks tired, it's because they probably are overworked right now. The building department issued 23 permits, which is down from last month, so maybe we're starting to keep through where fall is going to land. But there's still 24 open planning board project, which is up one from last month. And that's all I have.
Thank you. So I would just add to the planning board piece real quick. So last night the planning board, you know, we're moving over to Muni Collab?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. No, no, I, I, I was, so we're moving over to Muni Collab, which is going to be the way that we're going to accept applications. Everything's going to be, there's not really going to be paper submissions. We're going to direct you to go once it's all up and running. Initially, it's going to be the planning board that we're launching, then the ZBA. The planning board had a training last night. And then we're going to basically be piloting the building department, code enforcement, building department application feature of Muni Collab. And so they're going to be, we're going to be kind of like their guinea pigs to test it out. But everything is going to be electronic. It's a great system. I mean, I've never seen Gary more excited about something digital or electronic because it's going to make his life really easy and I think it's going to hold, it's going to hold the public accountable, you know, when they say, oh, I gave this to you like weeks ago. Well, we can see the timestamp of when you gave it. You know, escrow, it's going to help us manage the escrow better for consultants and for applicants. You know, we're kind of moving into the 21st century here. I think it's really great. The public's going to like it. Building department likes it, they're very happy about it. So that's, that's happening. You'll hear more about the rollout when we're officially ready to make it live. Tim, you got anything? No.
Good luck to you.
Oh, wow.
You're not going to be digging anything else? You're not going to be digging anything else?
We're just going to recover in record time, like last time.
We're just texting. Yeah, because he did all your work till now.
He did, soon. Cleaning the motherland, those gutters and pool and all kinds of, nice with the bank.
Did you really?
He was. I was going to say, you don't want to go up on the roof. I mean, that, that's the, you know. Got anything for Jane?
Yes. So on June 21st, the senior advisory committee, they had their annual barbecue at the Cornwall Yacht Club. This year, they decided to use Irish eyes. They did a fantastic job. And just want to express my gratitude to the Cornwall Yacht Club, who has always stepped up and helped, helped the seniors, you know, not only get their food, but really opened their doors and made it very welcoming. And the seniors absolutely love being there. June 30th, we had our monthly meeting and we did discuss some of the items. The couches did come in, so we did some updating. Yes, it was very interesting. But so far, the majority of the seniors do like them. It's easier for them to get out of the couches. And it brought a lot of smiles to people and I'm sure that's, as a board, you know, you just respond to some basic needs and they were very happy. The chairs are probably not going to come in until, that'll be approved until the end of the month. I checked, there were some backorder issues. And again, I know Rosemary left, but you know, she really works hard with me and we, you know, on this project and she has more ideas and that, that's great. So look forward to more things.
Thank you. Let's see, the town of Cornwall Police Department, let's go through here. Traffic and appearance tickets, 37. Motor vehicle accidents, 25. I only got three arrests made this month. I think last month it was like 11 or something a little higher. Slowly, right? 911, 911 hangups, four, 22 alarm, residential business, eight animal complaints, but no, right, no dogs and kettles, right? Okay. Not going to run there. Got two burglaries, one criminal mischief, seven disabled vehicles, six domestic incidents, 27 medical calls, four parking complaints, seven suspicious vehicles, 11 house checks, and 20 assist other agencies. And I guess just, you know, for the public who missed it, you know, last time we did, you know, you know, approve the new three-year contract for the PBA. You know, again, that was a really good thing that we did. Now, Tim and I were going over at my office today on the board and of course, there's still like a lot of stuff that's in motion. But we did, I will say, we got a CSCA contract crossed off, the PBA contract crossed off. EMS. So, yup, EMS. So right, that, that's three, you know, rather big contracts that, you know, we got through. Thank you, board members. Now on to EMS. So, you know, again, 100% response rate. You know, times are in Cornwall, seven minutes and eight seconds in Cornwall, six minutes and 52 seconds in Cornwall Hudson. One thing that I do think we kind of have to take a look at here, Michael did point out this one thing that I hope is not going to be a trend, but there was, there has been a reduction in call volume. So obviously, call volume, if you have less of it, you know, that does translate into a loss of income from the agency if it's stuff that can be billed. And so if they keep up on trend, that will be a decrease in revenue for their overall agency, which means that then their municipal partners have to, you know, make that up or they have to reduce, you know, you know, stuff related to operational costs. So that's. Yeah. So anyway, I mean, he just pointed this out. That was kind of really the only glaring thing that I, you know, I almost never, but just wanted to point that out. But again, look, I will still say, again, even with that happening, if you look across the county, go and look what others are spending. Let me see, real quick here, the, the yellow ducks on the pond, I'm just going to say this because I think this is absolutely amazing. So since we put the yellow ducks in, how many of you all have seen other ducks on the pond?
The ducks are there, there's no geese.
You know what?
No geese.
Well, the other day I saw the mallards, like, they were all scared to get in the water because they were afraid of the giant yellow ducks. Like, they were about to get in and then like they, they backed off. So maybe they've like, but no Canadian geese. I think those giant ducks are keeping them alive.
They're so cute.
I almost tend them to keep them up like year round. So if you do, like, usually.
I went, I took them out for like, I tell you, see what happens to them when they're ready for.
Whatever happens to the alligators? I really like the alligators.
The alligators are so much.
It's a long time ago.
The alligators are weird, just to think of some island. So they actually attract stuff.
Oh, never mind. What's wrong?
I told Tim, I think it's like a study. We're just going to like go the rest of the year and see if it works. And I think we've done.
Can we dress the, the ducks up like Santa Claus?
Like the season.
Or Christmas, that we're about to spend like a lot of money on.
We could give them a scarf or put lights on them?
We have ideas. Look at.
We'd, we'd be like, what are you doing?
Don't have to, Tommy's work.
I have no problem with ducks, they keep the geese away.
I know, it was Santa Claus one time.
Santory and homestead. So my understanding is, is that the work's done inside. Maybe there's a little bit of like cleanup, straightening up work that has to be done inside. But as far as outside, the next thing is going to be to beat the porch. And then I think we're looking to get people in there again at some point.
They did report on the Fourth of July, they had over 125 visitors.
Oh, good, okay.
That's good.
The Cornwall Historical Society actually doubled their visitors. They were up to 80 this year for the Fourth. So I know the signs that, you know, we discussed, they really did help.
I think you can make it some like website upgrades.
Yes, they are. Yeah, they, they have a lot of really great ideas. So no, it was really nice to see both of them open and active and people are interested.
Then we got the American Legion. So I think we spoke about this last time. The engineers are basically putting together new bid packages because, because of Wicks Law. We got to bid it all out separately, so. Yeah, no, it is, it is. And then I guess I have two sort of minor, not minor, but I mean, you know, we do, Senator Scoofus, he was able to get us $10,000 to have a combined New Windsor Cornwall like senior, picnic senior event, which we will be having in the fall. That'll cover the cost for that. And then also that $50,000 grant that I mentioned during the earlier, where we're, where I think it's going to be vestibule. I mean, it's either like vestibule or it's like replace the tables and chairs in the dining room. So I guess that's kind of a, let's, let's talk about it.
Maybe we should take them to the county, they have an event where they have the dinner, dinner and lunch for the Senator Scoofuses. The county is offering for seniors. It's like you go to the Chicago Performing Arts, I think it's still at county, if I'm correct. And anyhow, I don't know, it's taking big, it's like I'm taking $10,000.
The county is very excited with their new purchase.
Yes, I know, but we want to make sure we can get the seniors there. That's, and the veterans, because transportation's an issue, so. See, we got some buses there. All right, I'm thinking that, okay.
Okay. All right, any public comment on anything? No? Okay. So if I could give, we do have a couple things we got to talk about, I apologize, an executive session.
I just, if I could just say one thing. No one has said the same, I'm upset to you, but tell them. I really want to commend our highway and our buildings and grounds. They really pulled together, we did an awesome job for the Fourth. It was, no, everyone really commented, to me especially, straight to like, those guys are out there during, you know, some really tough weather. And everyone was like, not a single complaint. And by the way, the next day, the cleanup, there was a lot of compliments, like you didn't see any candy in the road or, or anything, like you guys really did a fantastic.
You were really.
Yes, you are, fantastic job. And again, just thank you. Everything ran smoothly, I didn't say anything, but if there was something, you do a very professional job.
Sure.
So, but thank you. It was, I think it was a really great Fourth of July and, and your department's a very much part of it.
Thank you.
Well, actually, yes, that, that'll be something we're going to have to stand up at the beginning of the year and talk about because you do have one of the oldest colonial structures in Orange County in town. But yeah, I mean, also to, you know, he wasn't expecting to help me have to carry that Rotary Club peace pole that was eight feet long, I don't know how much it weighed, you know, into the courtroom, which I'll have to show you. It's like, yeah, it's like eight feet tall and it, it, it's something that I guess, you know, the Rotary is giving us, you know, as part of helping them with the Hometown Heroes display. So it's this massive eight-foot pole that says, what is it, that says like peace or something and then like a bunch of different languages.
Wow. You're the bizarre one, peace.
Yeah, yeah.
I said mission.
Yeah.
Is that prospectique?
Yeah, oh, no, it's ours, yeah. So actually, what we're going to have to do is I, I, I'll have to, at the next meeting.
Have to do a place.
Yeah, well, we do, because it has to be put.
The Rotary has to install it themselves.
We could make a church and.
Yes. Well, it's ours and they want to make a dedication to us.
It's like the Statue of Liberty.
So I assume you're like one of our veterans.
It's got to go like two feet into cementing.
Well, I also forgot, oh my gosh, thank you to the Cornwall Independence Committee, all those volunteers that made the day early special for Cornwall. I'm sorry, I think, well, you're the ones that forgot them. They did a great job. Thank you.
They did, they did.
I said, I like the door, candy falls, especially the politicians.
I handed candy, I didn't throw anything.
Look, I'll tell you, you know what I learned? I mean, like triple the amount of candy that I had along the route because I was out early by the time I got up to like, you know, village hall.
I saw one Tootsie Roll today on the block.
There you go. No, I think they really, you did really.
In town or village?
It was actually in the village, so now that makes sense. I would never let that.
Our street sweeper sucks a little better than that.
It was a, I love a Tootsie Roll.
You don't throw chocolate, that's the one thing about parade candy throwing, no chocolate.
I do insist that St. Patrick's Day parade for chocolate, because of colds.
You know, you got to buy the other one.
Are we done, sir?
Well, motion to waive the executive session is dismissed.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelina Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes.